Good evening, everyone. It is, sorry, I'm a little punchy, it's been a long day already. It is April 9th, 2025. This is a meeting of the Communication and Policy Committee of the Concord School Board. I am the Chair, Cara Meeker. Also with me tonight are members Barbara Higgins, Jim Richards, and Liz Boucher. We have several guests with us tonight. And so, because I feel bad that I don't know everyone's names exactly, I'm going to let Superintendent Murphy introduce them. But with us tonight, as usual, is Superintendent Kathleen Murphy, Karen Fisher Anderson for Inside In, and we've got John Fabrizio over there as well from the Administration. We have some plans to get through tonight. We had talked about this previously where we need to review plans that are associated with policies. So it is my understanding that we will be reviewing plans tonight that have received updates in this last year. By policy, I believe that we review them, but I don't believe we take a vote on them. I don't know if we actually like send them to the Board for approval. So tonight, I think, is informational and open to questions and comments. With that, I'll turn it over to Superintendent Murphy, Murphy for introductions.
Thank you so much. In your packet, in addition to your agenda, you'll see the policies related to these plans. We thought, you know, you have policies, it dictates that you have to do these plans. So we thought it was important that you see that policy. So you'll see that in your packet. But I did ask the folks who have been instrumental in developing these plans. And, you know, it's not an overnight kind of activity. It takes a lot of time and planning. And they reach out to a lot of folks when they're doing these plans. So I'm really pleased that they were able to be with us tonight. And Fern Sidon will present on the suicide plan. I think you've seen Fern at some of our meetings. Maybe haven't seen Laura as much, Laura Anderson, but she oversees all of our nursing services in the district and was instrumental in making sure that we had all the appropriate policies in the health plan for the district. And then, of course, you all know John, and John has spent hours. And I think it was the thickest plan, if I look at this, John had, John was the winner tonight with the thickest plan.
He gets a prize. I have a chocolate in my purse, I'll give it to you.
Yeah, I think he would rather be recognized for other things. But, and John will explain all of the pieces to that. And it's been a while since Dan's been with you, Dan Albert. But Dan is Director for our Technology. And he will, he will present the governance plan. I think he's also liked a little bit of airtime, if we could, to give you a little update on what happened yesterday with a breach to our parent square. And I think I sent you a late email last night. We were trying to get to the bottom of it, and I think we're still getting to the bottom of it. But Dan will give you a little bit of update on that. I, I hope no one minds, but I did promise Dan to be first tonight because he was like, I don't know what time he went to bed last night. So if you can, not that the rest of them don't work hard, trust me. But I, I kind of gave him first dibs tonight because I knew he put in a very, very long night last night.
This evening last night.
Yeah. Thanks, Dan. I'm going to let you do, go.
Sure. So, Data Governance Manual. We started in 2009. Former Director of Pank Cloud created the initial draft. We've been updating it every year. Obviously, there's not enough time to go through all 50 pages. So I just kind of wanted to touch on some of the updates that we've been doing and projects related to the Data Governance Manual. Really briefly, just to kind of show the differences between what has been presented previously in the previous years. But, yeah, so it started in, with HB 1612, where the state required us to create this manual and present to the school board every year. So we do our best to, we've got a pretty solid plan that addresses all of the policy required by law.
Are you trying to show on the screens?
Oh, right.
Sorry. Just thought folks at home might like to see that.
What do you call them? You don't have a technical issue?
I don't know.
The box stops with you.
Some of it is a little more or less.
Sorry, Dan.
We're not teasing you. A little bit. I'll ask a quick question while you're pulling that up, which is, I see that the data governance and security policy was last updated in 2018. Has it been passed through policy for review at any point since then?
Not to my knowledge.
Since I've been here. We did do the, the other one that's connected to it, that was, or excuse me, that how long we store stuff?
Oh, record retention.
Correct.
Oh, yeah.
We've done that.
We've done that recently.
This particular one.
Gotcha.
There would be some changes that I would recommend. Just little stuff like title, title changes and some responsibility changes as far as the actual policy goes, if we want to review that sometime. I did not prepare for that, though.
That's okay. Neither, neither did we.
Neither did we.
But knowing that there are minor updates that could easily move through the process.
Yes.
And it is eight years.
Technology moves fast, as we know. So definitely have a chat with Administration and they'll bring it forward.
Yeah, and most of the, I mean, most of the policy surrounds the law. And it's all pretty clear on that, so. All right. Now that this is working.
Great. Thank you, Dan.
But essentially, the law is to set minimum policy standards for what people should be doing, what districts should be doing with their data. And I think we've kind of been a leader in this area for a while. So I'm, I'm happy that we've been able to continue along. And we really put a lot of work into a lot of the stuff in this manual as far as getting things done rather than just writing them down. So the recent additions we've really worked on have been our backup infrastructure. In the last year, it's been something we're pretty proud of. Essentially, now where we used to kind of have more sporadic backups, we've got the Concord High School where we have our data center is now being backed up to a secondary site at the Millbrook School District that can spin up all of our onsite infrastructure in the event of catastrophic failure at the high school. In addition, we've implemented an archival server so that we can keep long backups in case of a cybersecurity incident that compromises those data systems. We can keep like a six month, we can go back six months and pull those in. On top of that, from Millbrook, we shoot it up to the cloud where if we lose everything onsite, we can spin up critical systems like MUNIS so that we can do payroll and get people on the Internet as a last resort. We also back up our cloud Office 365 and Google, which stores most of our personal documents and that kind of thing to a second cloud backup infrastructure that lets us, you know, do things like restore documents if they've been deleted for too long or something like that. So we've got a really solid backup infrastructure in place now that has been great. And we're, we're very happy to have that peace of mind moving forward.
Can I interrupt with a question?
Yep.
Would you say that this is to meet the minimum standard in law or do we exceed standards?
I would say this far exceeds minimum standards.
Okay. Thank you.
As far as current projects that we're working on this year in the Data Governance Manual is to update the comprehensive disaster recovery plan to reflect all the changes that we've made to our disaster recovery system. So now, we just completed last month, actually last week, we put the final piece in. So now that we have all this new infrastructure and we need to get the updated version of that into the Data Governance Manual for next year. On top of that, we've been working on really, another piece of the policy is that we have to have a complete inventory of all of our software and who it goes to. This is obviously a bit of a challenge with our seven-person IT staff as we have a lot of software. This spreadsheet shows all of our data privacy agreements that we contract. This one shows all of our Google extensions. And then this is all the configured access applications that we utilize across the district. So while this is a requirement, it's a pretty high bar to pass for probably any district. And I would guess that no one's really able to do that because they're changing so much. But we have been working on it. We've been pulling the information together. I think we satisfied the basic requirements, but it's something we have to really stay on top of moving forward, for sure.
What is the benefit of having it inventoried in this way?
It's important to know, like in the case of, say, a Power School incident, what?
Hypothetically.
What data is being stored in specific instances? So if you can know ahead of time that we're storing these points of data in this system, these are the users that have access, if something becomes compromised, you can react a little quicker to identify that data and remediate what you can as timely as possible.
Dan, we use Khan Academy, right? And we use it in a variety of places. Why does it say "not verified"?
That's, that is, it's not, that's something that's spit out by Google. It's, they haven't gone through the process of registering it with Google for some reason. I'm not sure why. And that just could be, sometimes things appear multiple times on this. And like you'll have a verified one and an unverified one because they've changed the application. But that's kind of one of the barriers to spitting out this data and then trying to look at it.
I'll add too. It's important because a lot of times we're purchasing, especially in the world of student services, many, I guess you call them add-ons in a way. We'll call them configured access, but I call them add-ons. Things like elevations to oversee our ML population and knowing and tracking and creating systems to help our educators do that. We have, you know, Lexia for reading. We have, you know, a lot of our assessments are online for special ed, things like that. So I'm often communicating with, you know, Dan and Anna before I go and make those steps to say, does this fit? Does it meet data governance? Does it do all the things? Can it work within, within Power School? What's the effort to keep that continual communication happening between it? Is it a manual load or does it load automatically? There's a lot to it. So that's kind of some of the things that happen on a daily basis.
Well, and so I guess my question is really around like generating that spreadsheet. If it's labor intensive, what is the value of actually having that inventory? But it sounds like even just to know and remember what we have, what we're using, it has value?
Even, I mean, even the exercise of spinning out that, looking at it, reviewing to make sure maybe something's configured inside of Google that no one's using anymore. It's, it's something to, because it's, there's so many that it's, you want as little data access as possible by outside vendors. So trying to, at least going through the exercise and creating it and seeing things, you'll be like, you know, even if it's just, oh, I know we're not using that anymore, I can go and turn that.
It's like subscription management, times a million.
Right.
Right.
And it's repetitiveness, too. Sometimes we have three, three things doing the same exact function and we're paying three bills.
Yeah.
As you say. And it makes sense that we do look at this to say, oh, can we consolidate this or not? Or, or, you know, archive that and move to something else.
Great.
A far cry from the white colored copy and the marigold copy and the green copy.
I miss those days.
Everything has a place.
Yeah, and as far as software management, we're very lucky to be a part of the NHCTO Tech SDPC Student Privacy Alliance. It was just a few states a few years ago, and now it's about 10. So everyone's kind of seeing the value in this. But essentially, we can outsource a lawyer that will go and have better, sorry. They will work with the software vendors to get data privacy agreements signed that meet our standards and the standards of the state and our data governance policies. Essentially, we can, if some other district's done it, we can log in and just sign on to their agreement. So they only have to be negotiated once through this alliance. And it's, it's been, it's a huge time saver for us because it would be a lot of work and a lot of lawyer fees to do something like that. And that's something that has to be done for student safety and civil law. So that's been great. I hope other districts start doing that. We've also expanded some of our offerings for what we, what we allow our staff to have access to for data governance. We've created a new portal on our Intranet that kind of goes over some, just to give some brief information on what data governance is, why we do it, why it's important. It kind of gives you, you know, we have a nice breakdown of what you need to look at to see if you need to get your software that you want to use approved. So we've got a little flow chart for that. And then we use a digital tool, request form, that if you decide, if you spoken with your digital learning specialist and you do want us to look at a piece of software, you go fill out this form, we get an email about it. The curriculum department gets an email about it. They will go in and see if it's something that has educational value. If so, we start pursuing the information security and data privacy agreement from there. So that's, that's our main practice for that. As far as other projects, a data dictionary that would go along with our software inventory. And then the recent Power School incident has made us think about data retention policies a lot and what data we're holding on to that we maybe shouldn't be. So that's something we're hoping to revisit this year as well.
Dan, would you give the Board a brief, just a brief picture of what happened last night? In terms of not Power School, but parent square?
Yeah. And, yeah, obviously not to get too much into any specific vulnerabilities. The parent square software is kind of a unique beast for us where we want people to use it. So it's not as stringent, stringently locked down as other pieces of software. So while it does look like this account was compromised, they did also, you know, try and get into Google and Microsoft, which because we have the multi-factor authentication and region blocking, they were using a VPN to mask their IP address. So we got flagged from them getting into our systems anything beyond the parent square posts they were able to send out. We've, we're getting some more information from them about the login situation. But we've identified some areas where we maybe, that, that could have prevented the issue. And we can, we can release some more information to you guys about that. Any other questions? Any other questions about that or?
You know, parent square is a little bit more vulnerable, as Dan said, because we want it to be user friendly. And the kids use it and coaches use it and we want it to go to parents. So as a result, it becomes a little bit easier to access. And someone did get in last night and sent messages out only to the staff, the high school staff, high school staff. And so we got some emails pretty quickly noticed. These guys jumped right on it, shut it right down. And, but we are, they spent the day, rest of the night. And today, trying to analyze where we can tighten it up and how that, how did it happen? Why did it happen? And we think we know why.
Well, I think, I don't know, from my own perspective and my own personal life, digital protections, just it feels like a constant onslaught. And so I don't really, I don't feel like we didn't do our job on our end. But at some point, bad actors are bad actors and humans are humans. And I can install a ton of locks on my house, but if somebody wants to break in in a creative new way, you know, it's a sort of a cat and mouse game.
It's a very unfortunate reality. I mean, there's, we, we attend quarterly.
Try the window, right?
Yeah, we attend quarterly meetings where they review incidents that have happened in the state. There's always multiples. There's been some pretty sophisticated state level actors that, I mean, if they're targeting you, there's, I mean, all you can really do is make yourself the hardest target possible, which is what we strive to do here. And if you're not a low hanging fruit, maybe they'll go somewhere else. I mean, not that you want them to, but we're doing our best to protect our data privacy by making our target as difficult to get into as possible.
That's good to hear. Does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I just have some general questions because, you know, this is a, could be a pretty, potentially pretty expensive situation on this. So I just want to make sure, with regards to, and I read through your policy and all, we stated somewhere in the policy, they, you identified that students' social security numbers are not collected or stored. Is that true?
That we do not collect or store them for our systems. I can't speak to every department.
I'm just curious as to, so many of our students and an increasing number of our students are participating in external learning opportunities and where they may be working for someone and being compensated for them. And I just wanted to know if we do ever collect social security numbers for that and do, how do we store them? And how do those individual departments store them? Not that I know, I just need that you know in that one. And then I also had a question with regards to, do we, you, you have a pretty robust system. Do we do training on probably the weakest link of this whole system? Which is the user being phished by someone who says, "I'm IT and we need to check your, your, you know, credentials. Could you please type them in here?" And I know that has happened to the district in the past, resulting in the loss of pretty much everyone's W2s. And, yeah, we had all.
That was a bad dick.
I was like, you guys are your muscle memory for like these trauma incidents.
Well, I was gonna say, we, we, even though Board members are not compensated a great deal, we do have a W2. And so the, including our data was out there. So do you do training or testing or fake phishing messages?
Yes.
Or anything you do to the staff to help train in that area?
Yes. We have, we've been doing phishing testing for years. We're, we're moving from the No Before platform to the Microsoft platform currently. They're offering it as part of something we already pay for rather than a pretty expensive side software. But we've also really improved our reporting on phishing incidents this year. So I, we get a decent amount of them. They get identified as bad links in our system. I get emails about them all times a day. I literally just removed an email that had a phishing link 10 minutes before we started this meeting. I went in, deleted it from everyone's. They will eventually pick, the AI inside of Microsoft Defender will eventually go and pick them up. We can identify users that have clicked the links. And then we can, you know, initiate password resets and that kind of thing. There's usually a time, a timeline of at least a week before these credentials are collected and when they're actually used in an attack. So we've, our new reporting has really helped us stay on top of identifying those incidents. Because it's one thing to train. Unfortunately, we haven't seen huge reductions in click rates through training programs. It's, it's, a lot of the times, they're coming from people you know. And that's when, that's when people get hit with them the most. It's someone else's email from an organization that we do business with. And they get compromised and they send us an email. And people are like, oh, I know them, I'll click the link. And that's, it's not until those links get registered and we can identify that stuff. So that's been a big help to us this year. Well, it's been a lot of extra work.
I taught for several years at V-Lax, which is an online charter school. So everything is online. And we had all the time these phishing emails. And if you goofed too many times, if you opened it or opened it and then didn't, you know, either report it or delete it or whatever, you'd have to take mandatory training. And it was tedious, long, nobody wanted to do it.
Yep.
So we became vigilant at, anytime I got something that wasn't typical, I just spammed it and let my supervisor know every single time. But it was probably every day that I did this. And eventually, the frequencies went down. But it was like, as much as of my job is teaching sometimes, was just deleting these emails.
Yeah.
It's not, I, a district, yeah, it's gotta be crazy.
Yeah, well, and then, but training does do it. And especially makes me concerned about those phone messages that come to people, too, that say, hey.
Easy pass.
All those different things that you don't have a software filter or, you know,
Yep.
a bot that could go over. The other thing I, I noticed as I read through this is that you have a pretty robust system for teachers and staff, although I still worry about thumb drives and personal computers coming in there, even though you strongly recommend against them, it sounds like they could still use them. But the students' social, or the students' number, the password and their protection is pretty much a one-time password. And it's, that seems like the weakest passwords of all. How much access could someone from a student account get into or affect us? And if you don't want to talk about this in public, you're, I understand.
It's, it's pretty minimal. They don't really have access into our, where we store our most secure data. Yeah, I won't get too much into it, but there's not too much you can compromise from a student's account inside generally the Google environment unless something's been unintentionally publicly shared by an individual. I get a I get a message every time someone in our environment shares a public link. I review them all to make sure, you know, there's nothing in those public links that contains anything that shouldn't be out there. So we, we do have some recourse to that.
Okay, because I read through all, the MFA and all the, the other security steps for getting into our system that the administrators and the teachers use seems pretty, pretty good.
Yeah.
I just worry about the fact that a student's account is really pretty easy. I know a few years ago, it was easier to hack their passwords, but I know that doesn't happen anymore. But, or at least that was in there. And that's been corrected, so good. I just, I, I get concerned about unauthorized access that could cause a pretty good financial hit to the, even if it, if they don't get into critical systems, but just take down the system or, you know, keep you busy for, for a week, it would be really bad.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you for answering those questions.
Yeah, of course.
Any other questions, comments? All right.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you, Dan.
God love you, my friends.
Godspeed.
So we're gonna go from data governance to health. So Laura has been working for quite a while on the health manual and working with her team of nurses and folks. So I'm gonna let she and John get us.
Yep, they'll get us out.
And it, just so you know, that's Policy 531, which talks about our health procedures manual.
Which was adopted in 2002.
Yeah.
Although it is pretty brief. It's probably not a lot to have to amend.
Right, it, it, it pretty much just tells the process of review and the fact that every three years, we should bring it forward to the board. So, go ahead, Laura. Thank you again for being here.
Yes, thank you, Laura.
My pleasure. So I'm gonna go through.
Laura, will you get closer to the mic? Yep, because I have to hear you at home.
When my children aren't home.
All, all three people that are streaming this live. They love this stuff.
So I'm going to go through, I, I put a few slides on here. I'm hoping that everyone got this. There's, and I kind of tabbed a few things that I wanted to highlight as well that are in this new manual, or updated manual, I should say. One is in immunizations. And what I did there is I added the homeless, added homeless and unaccompanied youth, as well as adding military and military-connected students to what we already have. The other thing that I wanted to highlight for you in this is, this is from the DHHS. Pursuing, and I, and I called because I'm concerned about measles on our doorstep sometimes. So pursuant to New Hampshire Statute RSA 141-C20-D, during an outbreak of a communicable disease for which immunization is required, students who are under or unvaccinated shall be excluded from school and school-related activities in the event of an outbreak of a vaccine-preventable disease for which immunization is required by the schools. Exclusion is at the discretion of New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services. And in some instances, and this is why I called the DHHS, I wanted to find out for measles what it would be. And they said it would be up to or beyond 30 days for students to be out if they are unvaccinated or under vaccinated.
Which would be a terrible shame.
Yes.
Should a child not be vaccinated and have to be out of school for that long?
Yeah, it would be a travesty really for the student and maybe even for their parents, too.
Laura, there's been a lot of discussion at the legislative level around vaccinations and vaccines. Are you aware of how that might impact this?
So I've been trying to follow along a little bit, and sometimes I actually yell at the television a little bit. So I think for most of our students, we have a good portion that are vaccinated. But then we have some who are not due to religious reasons or other reasons. So I'm, I'm hope, I'm hoping that I can get out a, a, a Power School note to, just to everyone in the district, just saying, hey, make sure you're up to date on your vaccines. It's really important, especially the MMR, the T-DAP. Those are usually the two ones that we see that are not necessarily up to date. So it, it's kind of hard to catch them in between. So hopefully with some, you know, with the nurses helping, I got a big dose of how to do the, 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 the report that we do for the state with immunizations, because I was covering over at Beaver Meadow. So I did that, and I learned a lot. I'm going, oh my, so, you know, and, and I'm, and I'm the kind of a person who will hound people and say, listen, don't forget, you need to get this done. And I would send some people who were not able to get into their primary care or don't have primary care, I told them to go to Manchester to the public health there. And we had several people who did do that. They took their kids there, and they were very happy with it. So that's one of my ways of getting it in. Thank you.
I do have a question about whether, or just your thoughts really, on how this may bump up against access issues for medically vulnerable students who cannot get immunized and, and should have legal rights to access to schooling.
Absolutely.
So I guess my question is, how does this interact with that situation?
So again, I would probably reach out to the state just to get their ideas because they're, they're in it all the time. So because I certainly, you know, if we can include a student via remote, which I know is going back to the COVID days. But I also don't want the students who are vulnerable to end up ill.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's one of those, you have to balance it a little bit and try to figure out some, some concrete things. So I can definitely go back to the state and say, what can we do for our vulnerable students?
Yeah, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, herd immunity is so important for our vulnerable students, too.
Oh, it sure is.
We all need to think about our neighbors in this.
So we've had this come up a couple of times. We've had students who've come back from like, say, a tonsillectomy. And they're at school like, the next day, even though they should be out for a couple of weeks after a tonsillectomy. So what we, what we came up with. All my lovely little tabs that I have are failing me.
Now, you're officially in the policy committee family, because we do this every time we have a meeting, where we shuffle through all our papers, being like, where is the one I want?
It was nice and organized. So one of the things that we have is a medical device. So that's if, if a student comes in following an injury that requires a cast, a boot, a splint, or crutches, we need to have the provider note stating that this is what they can and what they cannot do. Because, you know, we don't, we don't necessarily know what has happened to the child. But if they're wearing a boot or a cast, we want to make sure that we don't, you know, if, if they are running on the, on the, you know, on the, on the playground, and they go down and they hit that arm that may have just been put into a cast the day before, we don't want that to happen. So we want to make sure that we have enough information from the provider to say, this is what they can and they cannot do. And also, return to school following a medical procedure requiring sedation or anesthesia. We've had cases where people will bring their kids back early, and they're kind of still a little bit out of it. They don't necessarily, tonsillectomies are, are different because we, usually you're out for at least a week, just to let it heal a little bit. So, but we still would want something, you know, if they have had sedation the day before, we need a note to say that the student is okay to come and participate in school. So that was one of our other ones. And the, the usual return to school following an illness, some schools do require having a note from a doctor if it's been more than three days out. Not, it, it's different between schools. Some schools don't, and some schools do. So I'm thinking we might want to make that something different and kind of roll it into everything so that we can have. But what I think we need to do is have things more congruent throughout the district with medical policies and procedures.
Quick question. The policies that you're talking about are, is there guidance in the existing plan that just needs to be modified? Or is there a policy that perhaps needs to be written or amended from the board's side in order to accommodate that change?
Yeah, the two, the return to school and the, for injury and the medical are new.
Okay.
Those are the two new ones. The rest is return to school following an illness. And it said, but some schools may require a healthcare provider note to return. Because there are some students who are out for extended amounts of time, and then they come back, and we want to know why.
So you're just adding language to your plan?
Yes.
Gotcha.
Yep.
All of your policies around health issues are included in that plan. You did, the district did not have, like, a lot of districts will have separate policies for all of these things, but the comprehensiveness, if you will, of that allows all of the information into that manual. So that's how it was treated here. But like I said, other districts have a separate policy on various aspects. And it's, it's overwhelming.
I'll leave it to the committee to comment on it, but I am perfectly fine with the experts setting expectations around these plans. I guess my question was really, if you are restricted in some way because of an older policy that is in place, that needs to be modified in order to accommodate best practices for current day, obviously let Kathleen know, and they can come to us for modifications.
Absolutely.
The only one we have right now, just for clarification, is, the only policy on both the healthcare manual and also the special education is, is the ones, the one-pagers, which basically says that the superintendent has the authority to take and make the manuals, which are the ones that should be updated periodically. And we should do this, you know, the ad changes every year, and then you see them every three years. So aside from the brief, you know, this, sometime back, the decision was made to go to the manual style, which is kind of nice, because I remember a few years ago, there were all the concussion new protocols that came up. And the nurses were involved heavily in a lot of legislation. So by doing it yearly, and now getting better at, you know, we can do the ads each year and date them, I think that'll be sufficient.
Right. And I mean, I also trust that you're, just like you've shown in your presentation, that you're checking against state law, you know, rules, you know, law, rule, regulation. You're not generating language that is in conflict with the legal framework.
The beauty of having Laura with us in the district is she's a nurse practitioner at that level. So she, you know, as you know, she can do a lot more than just a regular RN. And so has the knowledge and experience to be able to do that and knows where, where to go to get the, the, the support she needs. So it's been really helpful. Because normally, this would have gone to a doctor for review. That's been the past practice. And we paid a doctor a, a fee to review all of any medical issues. And having Laura here to do that, we're, we're able to avoid that issue. And Laura can do it, so.
Absolutely.
Go ahead.
Well, she has the experience, too, of being in the schools, to know what needs to be addressed.
Absolutely.
So based on that, at least from this member of the committee, I would encourage you to please look for areas that we need to update and bring them to the superintendent's attention. And you'll have our support in that, at least my support in that, so.
Thank you. Just a couple of other things on concussion. So I've been working with Krista, Crystal, who is our athletic trainer, our head athletic trainer. So we were talking about concussions, and we developed, it's basically the return-to-play process, which has been, that's what we've always used. The new thing that has been required now is that the student needs to have written permission. So you, we can clear the student, but we have to have parental permission stating the parent is comfortable to have the student return to play as well. So that's one of those. And, and Crystal and I co-manage. I do a lot of physical exams on, on the athletes just because, you know, they, they need to have, and some of them need to have physicals done.
I gotta jump in because lots, I think Jim, you brought this up during budget time. Maybe it wasn't Jim, maybe it was other members of the board. You know, we talk about having athletic trainers available at multi-events. Well, guess who the other person that's running up and down the sidelines? At a soccer meet or a football game, or I'm on ice hockey games. And she's, she's got her wounds from ice hockey.
I do.
As she got, she got nailed by a puck.
If you would prefer us just to wrap all the children in bubble wrap and keep them inside to give you a break.
Maybe I need bubble wrap. I don't know, I'm getting older.
So we are fortunate in that respect, that she also has filled in and been that extra trainer during athletic events. So I, I have to give that, I have to give her that plug.
That's good. I, I have to ask now, at this point, does she get involved with the, this, and this is somewhat serious, somewhat facetious, is, does she get involved in the review of equipment that we are using and its preventive abilities? And does, does the sideline people have equipment too? Which is what the facetious part of this is. Maybe we should get her some pads and helmets.
She was on the bench.
But, you know, there, especially with concussions these days, there is lifetimes on helmets, there are procedures for if a piece of equipment is impacted. And, you know, I trust that our coaches, you know, are, always want to make sure that we're in compliance with that. But I sometimes wonder whether expertise in, in that is, you know, available to them. So do our medical people get involved in making sure that all of our equipment and items are up to par?
I, I don't know that they do. I don't believe they do. I think it falls on the responsibility of your athletic director and the coaches.
Well, I just consult with the athletic director to make sure that they, that they have access to that expertise. And if they don't, perhaps they should consult.
I agree, totally agree. Good point.
Yeah, okay. Well, I think Laura would be happy to consult, but I, you know, or recommend someone. But I think that's just a good step because, you know, we really enjoy our athletes and their participation. And we want to make sure that their, their safety and health is, you know, that, that the parents are enjoying the, the games and the competitions. And not, they're not concerned, you know, that their daughters or their sons are in danger.
Agreed.
And that they're protected. Thank you.
I know I'm taking a lot of time. I'm sorry. I'll kind of breeze through this. So conjunctivitis, otherwise known as pink eye.
Oh, no, never mind. Never mind. I don't want to talk about it.
So the American Association of Pediatrics, known as the AAP in my world, they, we've been getting notes from providers now saying, students can stay in school. And the first one that we saw, we're like, is that right? How is that not right? But that is now, the AAP generally recommends that children with conjunctivitis are not excluded from school or daycare unless they have a fever or are too unwell to participate in regular activities. They consider it more like the common cold. And it will resolve, it can resolve with the antibiotics, of course, drops and, or on its own. If the child is otherwise healthy, they can attend school or childcare. We have to emphasize good hand washing, you know, don't be doing this and touching your face like they all do. Wipe things down.
Don't breathe.
So I, I put it in here, and we can, we can go back and forth. It doesn't matter, you know, because, you know, some, we have, we all have associations. Like I have the American Academy of Nurse Practitioners. And we set forth certain guidelines, too. This is the American Academy of Pediatrics, and they've done studies on this. So it's not, they don't put this out lightly. They put it out because there's been research done on it. Of course, all of us are cringing going.
Right, I appreciate that it's data-supported, and also anecdotally, any of us that have had kiddos with pink eye. It's a frightening prospect.
And then there was another thing that I have done. So we, we, with our. And then there was another thing that I have done. Um, so we, 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 um, with our physicals, we, we're lucky if we get a physical. So we have, I've changed that to every two years. Obviously recommending that our students get evaluated and have a physical exam every year. But every two years, we need to have a up-to-date physical exam in hand, especially for athletics.
Oh, I see. You're saying that you need proof that a physical exam.
Yes.
Laura, what happens if there's a financial, um, pro, you know, issue around having to go to the doctors and having that done? I mean, it can be expensive for families, especially a family of, you know, four or five youngsters, right? So how do you handle that?
So, um, I mean, I can certainly do physical exams. So if there's someone who's in, in dire straits, I have no problem with doing a physical exam on them, just to make sure they're healthy and everything's good with them.
Any other questions?
No, but another benefit of having a provider in-house.
Um, the other piece of the, maybe John will mention it, but Laura also approves um all of the IEP, um, medic, not IEP, but the Medicare, Medicaid component that youngsters may access. And because it's off, it's medically, um, evolves from medical issues, um, Laura can approve all of that. We used to have to have, we used to have to hire a doctor to do that. She can do that also for us. So again, another way that we really tried to make all of that work more efficient. I gave you a lot of kudos tonight, so.
Thank you.
I don't know how she has time for all of this.
Go ahead, John. You could probably say that better than I.
Anything that's medically necessary. So anything you can think about. Sometimes that is, um, you know, sometimes that is a, a, um, a medical, um, you know, um, feeding, um, they may need. There may be medicines that are, that are dispersed during the day. There may be um a parent educator who is there um for the purposes of helping a child that maybe have a medical diagnosis. So we can certainly um sign off on all that. Any kind of occupational therapy, physical therapy, speech, speech therapy, any of the therapies, any psychological testing, anything like that that happens. Laura is the one that kind of signs a thing called the, you know, Order of Service or an ORF, you know. Um, and she spends many times signing ORFs in our little corner of our office.
Sounds like something from The Hobbit.
I think that's all that I have.
That's it?
Can I, yeah, I was gonna say, can I ask a quick question just in?
Of course.
Um, as I read through your report and all that, we have AEDs, automatic defibrillators in all of our buildings. What about at events? Do we have, like at the Memorial Field?
Yes.
That, is there access there or do we have some, I mean, and is there, or is there a policy that we need to consider for something like that? What do we do?
We, we, like typically when, when Crystal or I are at the fields, we will have the AED with us in the golf cart.
Okay, okay. Um, I'm just, just curious because increasingly you're seeing them in more places?
Absolutely.
And especially in, you know, community events like a football game or a band performance. Um, and I just wanted to know if we had them at, you know, those locations like Memorial Field. And if so, uh, is there anything we should need to do policy-wise or be aware of for having them there? In order to protect our, not only the community members, but our staff and administrators as well.
We did a pretty substantial um purchase of um all that equipment for our building. So we increased, we doubled all the number of AEDs in our buildings along with portable units that can be taken for games. So we think we're in pretty good shape with that, Jim, at this point.
I just wanted to ask that if we needed us to do anything?
It's, no.
Or, you know, either, either a policy or a budgetary?
I was gonna say, at some point, we probably have a budget line for battery replacement, you know.
Just to make sure that we're supporting, I mean, Thorsten had, I, these are great efforts. And I just want to make sure that we're supporting those efforts as well, not only policy-wise, but as, as Kara said, monetarily and budget-wise as well.
And we also have a program that, where some will come in every six months, I think it is, to replace anything that needs to be replaced on the AED. They go through the whole testing process. God forbid, should we ever have to use an AED, we call them right away and they will come down to us. And they will, um, they will look at the AED, make sure everything was operating correctly. And then they'll re, they'll just get it all set up again for us.
Money well spent. Thank you.
Uh, one question I have off of piggybacking this question is what about people who rent our facilities? Do they have access to an AED in terms of that?
Absolutely. We have them in the, outside of the gym, the cafeteria, the front lobby of the high school. Um, but we, we have AEDs in this building. We have them in every single building, multiples in some.
Oh, could use one in here.
So much stress. I'm gonna have a heart attack.
Exactly. That's what I was referring to. Thank you, Laura. That was great.
You're welcome.
Yes, thank you very much.
Again, we appreciate all you work that you do.
Thank you.
So.
Yeah.
Can I interrupt a second?
Sure.
If we don't have any other questions, can Dan and Laura go home?
Did you hear my stomach growling?
I did, but I was worried that you're looking a little tired over there. We appreciate you being here, but we're more than willing to get you to go home. But we're more than willing to let you go home because we appreciate that. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you both. Dan, I had you go first so you could.
I, I wanted to see how it was actually supposed to be.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
So we go from being healthy to trying to stay healthy in the suicide prevention plan, which Fern and her team have been working on. And I think we saw this plan, I think it was like my first year here, right? Was 2020?
Twenty one.
Um, I think, uh, yeah, maybe 21. Donna Pali presented it to the board. Um, and um, when, when Fern came, she knew it was time to really take a peek at it again. And um, lots of discussion around mental health was really important. So they, her team has done some changes and updated it. So Fern, it's all yours.
Great. Thank you. Thank you so much for having me. I'm glad to be doing this. Um, actually, I do want to say that when I got here, a lot of, the team had already done a lot of work on this. So it preceded my arrival. A lot of the, um, the school counseling and psychology and um social work team had met the student support team to support the beginning of that process. So when I came, it was kind of mid-process and um we did some work in, um, just, let's see, is it gonna work? Why isn't it working? Why isn't it changing? Oh, there we go. So at first, I just want to say that you can find the plan. Um, we thought it was really important to get this up uh as soon as possible in its updated version. So it is already up online and this is just where you can find it with a really nice summary because it is fairly long. And we want to make sure that um people can find the most important elements of it there. Um, and so there are updated lists right off the top. One of the big changes that has happened since this was originally written was the 9-8-8 and the New Hampshire Rapid Response Access Point. So that's probably the biggest change. There's not a lot that changes in the suicide plan, uh, prevention plan because it is very much prescribed by the law itself. And then, and in terms of what is inside of your plan. And it follows the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention Framework and for a school plan. So very much when I came, I was very familiar with this plan because the previous plans I had worked on looked quite similar because there are certain standard practices that we put into plans like this. Um, ways that we, we discuss um death by suicide, the kind of language we use, our understanding of what a warning sign is versus a protective factor versus a risk factor. So these are all um spelled out and explained. So this becomes a document that's just very, very important for education. And that's the purpose of the law. The law really is I-93, um, I mean, 193-J. This, they call it the New Hampshire Suicide Prevention Plan Law. Is really um about education in order to prevent. And so that's very much kind of a standardized pro, uh, set of facts and information. So there are 10 specific requirements of a plan that's spelled out in the policy. And so you'll see that just reflected right in the uh plan itself. You'll see the whole plan is kind of built around those features. It does require a biennial review and that is to make sure that things like the phone numbers are updated, who to call, and any other tweaks or changes in processes that we might have as we move forward. So the way, I just want to be clear that the way that it was done and the way we moved forward with this was by getting a lot of feedback. Um, when I got here, a lot of that feedback had already been collected. I, the first thing I did was meet with folks and, uh, as a big, large team. And um they shared with me some feedback about the process and what, what was still left to be done. I got together a smaller subgroup of people. Um, there was one in particular I wanted from the high school who's deals with this probably the most of any other person who's using this policy the most or, or plan the most. And she sat with me in line by line, especially on the procedural part, step by step. What happens? How do you get help for students in the event? And I know, and making sure that, that is all aligned and spelled out. So this becomes also um really a plan for fam, for both staff to understand what to expect. So this is something we want to be able to pick up in an event, that it's, that it's readable, that it's accessible, that we know where to turn and that, but it's also useful for families as well, educational for families and um anybody who cares about youth and their safety and health to, to know and understand. So it becomes a useful tool in that way. We then finally, the, the last component was just giving it to the school psychs because they are our liaisons in each school. Uh, they're identified as the identified person sort of in charge. So they're the ones who make sure that they keep all the, collect all of the data, um, they, you know, the screening tools. When they're done, they're, they hold the, onto those. Um, so this is just, you know, what this plan does. It ensures annual training. Um, we are required to provide two hours of training to every single person in the district. And that seems like it, it's a lot to get done and it's a lot of time to spend. And because it's every single year, it's really important that we think clearly about how to make it meaningful. Because, you know, when you do something every year and it's requiring the same information to be taught, it's hard to keep that fresh. But it's so important that it is. It's so important that it, um, that it remind, it is important that it reminds people to, to take really good care. You know, this is really important information. It also supports youth suicide prevention training. When I arrived, I was so pleased to learn that our high school uses the NAMI Connect program. Um, we have youth trainers and they're the ones, so youth trainers supervised by um, a, a couple of school counselors. And um it's incredible to have that opportunity, that youth are training the youth in supervision with, um, with the counselors. And so really, I was just so pleased. And then the middle school uses, during health class, uses the SOS program, uh, which is an excellent, you know, suicide prevention program. So both are evidence-based programs and it's excellent that we have those resources available. The, in terms of elementary work, we consider all the kinds of social and emotional and um work that we do to be suicide prevention, um, as well as the mental health literacy that we do to help them understand help-seeking. You know, how to seek help, what are, how, what are emotions? Um, what are, how do you recognize emotions in, in our, you know, bodies? And what are the difference between thoughts and feelings? So that's all very much prevention work. So these are the elements that are explained, risk factors, warning signs, protective factors. Um, we want to make sure that teachers are understanding how to recognize this. And we will be doing a lot more work with uh offering family and community trainings as well. And we also, um, in the event of a loss, uh, the plan also spells that out. And so it's, it's a very important document in that way. Um, I did want to just stress that another one of the changes in this uh plan reflects, well, two, two changes. And one other thing that we've done is add the um social, academic, emotional, behavioral risk uh scale, the SABERS. That is a uh universal screening tool that we do. It's not a mental health screener. It's, has nothing to do with that. It's just to say, it's a, I've spoken about that here before. But that's part of this because now we have a, we have a much better way of understanding how can we respond early when we need to help kids develop more skills in all of those areas, including like academic, if you're seeing a lot of inattention. How do we get it that early in order to help them avoid some of the um other problems that can emerge in schools when you have a really hard time paying attention? So how can you teach those skills? So we, um, we make sure that we are responding. And I just really wanted families who might be listening to just know that, you know, that this is a really good place to know. Like what does go on? How does a school respond? This is, we really want you to understand this. Another big change is that we've started using, um, and this got underway prior. And another thing that I came and went, wow, this is amazing. Uh, the district now uses the Columbia Suicide Severity Rating Scale. Again, it is not an assessment. We're not equipped as schools to do uh mental health assessments in this way. We're not the same thing as calling Rapid Response um Access Point. But it is a way that's standardized with the hospitals, with all hospital systems, with all, to get a sense of the severity of the situation. So prior to having this, basically, we would interview a student, how are you, if there was a risk factor or warning sign that occurred, and especially if they'd made a statement, uh, then we would, a counselor, in addition to one other person, we always have two people in the room, would interview somebody and ask questions. How are you feeling? What happened? Can you tell me more? Um, and a history would be taken. But there is no way to say, well, how, like, honest, like, how serious is, like, should this be something that you're going to the hospital immediately for? Is this something you're, um, you know, you're gonna wait on? What, now we can call and say to family members, um, you know, so we have this scale. They came out at a level that's very low. We would still, we still think you should know about this. We always, if this is being done, the parent always knows, um, and, or the, the family member, caregiver. And then it's especially useful if they have to go to a hospital or emergency room because they can say, here, the, they, they said they did this scale and it came out this and that's why we're here. So it really helps them and we, we're now speaking the same language. So it's a really excellent tool and, and schools across the country are using this now and I'm, I'm so pleased for that. Um, so that's one of the big changes that would be in this um plan. So we are always, another thing that we really want to stress and we stress in this plan is just, it's very important to partner with families and caregivers during this process. We, you know, we really need the help of uh family and caregivers to make sure that when the child is ready to return, that they're safe to return. And that's a really hard thing to do and it's hard in New Hampshire when there are, you know, long um hospital visits, uh, you know, emergency room lines and it's hard to get care. So we need really good communication when the child's returning. How did they do? What happened? Can you tell us more? Did they make any recommendations? And how can we help a family, uh, how, a child or a youth return and have a really nice soft landing when they return from whatever the experience so that we can help them transition back? So good communication is just so essential in seeing us as partners in this process. Um, and that in itself becomes prevention work because we're hoping that we don't see that happen again. Uh, updates, another thing that's not really, that in the plan already was stressed, our, um, the work with Riverbend as a partner. Um, this doesn't include the growing partnership that we have through our grants. Um, there's so much more that's happening now. It's not a, it, because it's grant-funded, it can't be something that we rely on, you know, as a forever promise. But it is, um, we're trying to build some more sustainable partnerships with Riverbend, NAMI New Hampshire, as well as now Concord Hospital. So that's, that's really important to be aware of. Um, updates really was just some current, you know, updates to current information that I shared. We really, I did a lot of, um, and the. We really, I did a lot of, and the person, Janine, prior to me, we really edited for accessibility of language. We took out some language that might have been just not really necessary and a little explanations that might have been really long. And then it's harder to kind of sift through and find what you need because this is a document that I feel really has to be like, wait, where is it? Where's that checklist? We don't want to have it be so long that it's hard to find things. So we just kind of pared it down and we updated it for formatting again with the help of Terry. Like how to make this look good, you know?
It's not that we're format geeks, but we were both looking at it like, oh, there you are.
I know. So the formatting is-
I'm trying not to bring Liz in with this.
The formatting is much better. And again, that all helps, right? Because it has to be a usable document. So.
Where is this document? Like who has it? Is it like in a nurse's office or is it online and everyone can get it?
This is online. Everyone gets it. It's given out at the beginning of the year. And, but that is part of it, is how we, how we get this out. We, I make sure that I get at the new faculty orientation, that we're telling them where to find it, what it says. And when we do the trainings each year, the two-hour trainings, it's stressed again what's in it. And most of the things in this are part of the requirements for the training.
This is a bit different. Do we still offer, does the health curriculum still, so kids, high school kids take health as do middle schools?
Yes.
Is there a suicide unit in the curriculum?
Oh, yes. Yes.
Because I taught health, it was a significant unit.
It's a significant unit. And I have to say, I'll share just because it's a great share, is one of the lovely things about our partnership with the grant is that now our mental health, the, the, the River, we call them a mental health liaison to Riverbend. She's a licensed therapist and our NAMI Family Peer Support Specialist, who is a, has lived experience. They are now visiting the middle school health class when they talk. And to talk about also, like, they do a mock therapy session, what it's like to talk to a therapist, what it's like to ask for help. So they're bringing that in and bring that extra dimension into the curriculum. And it's super cool. I'm really excited about that.
It was one of those units that I was always really nervous about because you don't want to, you don't want to say it wrong and you want to facilitate good conversations, but also not scare kids and.
Yeah. And it's really important that's again, we do send, health teachers do send information home about the curriculum as we know. And that's a really important piece that parents should know that if they feel their child would be triggered, if there's something that has happened in their family, that it's okay to opt out of that. There are other ways to get that information. For some children, it's really is hard to hear because this problem affects so many people in our community. And when these things happen, when a loss happens, it's got a ripple effect. And so I just really want to stress, since I have a mic in front of me, that I'd really like to stress that you never plant an idea in somebody's head about suicide. When you ask somebody, have you been thinking about, you know, taking your own life? Or finding whatever words you can say to ask people directly is prevention. And they have really shown that it does not cause or influence a person's decision. In fact, what it does is the exact opposite. So it really helps people finally say, you know, I think what, what people say is, who've lived through this, is they say, I'm so, you know, they're really glad somebody finally asked and because it says you've noticed. So I just want to put that out there. So.
Well, that's, that's very true. That's true about a lot of touchy topics.
Yes, it is. You're right.
People don't want to talk about my daughter because they want to make me sad. Well, okay, I'm sad. You know, so, and it's that, we think being quiet about things is the safe way and that's not true at all.
Absolutely.
I do have a quick question about materials that are translated in other languages. You know, like we have a lot of policies, the expectation that they're all going to be translated into all the languages that one might use is, you know, it's, it's not something we expect. But for things like, for policies and plans like this that may touch a parent, you know, and give them tools at home to use, I'm curious if this has been translated.
That would be a great thing to do. So now that we're getting this through this, this, I think that would be wonderful to do. And we could even have links up for find this in different languages. So, yeah.
I can speak to that a little bit. Terry, Terry, Terry can talk about this too. But Terry's been looking at an update to our website that links with Parent Square, which not the best topic today, but it does.
When Parent Square is working.
But Parent Square is, as long as it's a readable document, like through Word or through Google, forms like that, it will translate for you. And that's where we are going to more accessible. In the meantime, we have software in every building that we purchased about a year ago as part of our multi-language learning plan, as part of our action plan to put that forward this year, that every building has the ability to translate documents into that. We have a, we have a license here and every building has a license right now.
Is that AI-generated translation?
No, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a software that we purchased, that we actually researched to find someone that did this and we actually called some banks. And we said, who translates documents? And we couldn't figure this out because we would have thought there was a solution, but we called around and there wasn't really a good one. And we, Dawn Sillie and I kind of a year ago did this. And it's kind of, it's, it's really good software and it works pretty easily as long as it's a readable document and we can translate anything really right now into multiple languages.
It's been very helpful. Yeah. So all like 504 documents and special ed.
It's called paraphrase is what it's called, the software we're using. Yeah.
Yeah, it's really good.
That's great. It's, I'm sure it's on the list of Dan's list.
Yeah, it probably was on Dan's list.
Yeah. Wonderful.
Thank you for.
No, wait, wait, wait. We're not done with you yet.
We're not done yet.
For thank you for this and really thank you for all your dedication to wellness, student and staff wellness. I'm happy to be on the wellness committee with you because I think we're doing good work there.
Thank you.
But I just want to say with 90% of gun deaths are suicide in the state of New Hampshire and the board just passing policy 544, I didn't see any language in there about secure, about secure gun storage and was hoping that that would be in there.
Well, we just passed that policy Monday night.
But I'm on it.
Thank you. We should.
We actually talked about it this week though, so, but I haven't really had a chance to share that.
It's actually a really, I mean, lethal means counseling is a whole field. I mean, you, you could spend, you have a whole day training and lethal means counseling, like that's a thing. So, you know, it is true. It's a very true point. And that's where suicides that do end in loss is typically, you know.
But we can add that in, you know, and we have that, those materials that you shared.
Links for resources.
So I'm trying to figure out how to get those materials and be able to distribute them. So that's what we worked on a little bit this week, Bridgette and I.
Yeah, we want to put them in the handbooks.
Yeah, yeah.
And I mean, that brings up a really interesting point, which is, is safe storage part of a rapid response plan or a prevention plan should a child express?
It is part of questions that we ask. Do you, so it is one of like, is absolutely during that process. And when we talk to parents, we ask that as well. And then we do talk to parents about, you know, we, you know, your child's being sent home. Can you, can you help us understand how we can make sure that they're safe in all places? Because, you know, and we, it's hard. It's a hard conversation, but you do have to look at your whole house. There's also a lot of medications around and people have to, it's a, it's a, our counselors and social workers and school psychologists are, they are, they are good at bringing this up and then, you know, talking through it with a family. But it is a very hard conversation to have because parents are usually in that moment of just being extremely concerned and shocked and not knowing what to do and having to get involved with the mental health system and, you know, it's, it's complex. We do have a brochure that we hand out with, you know, when we've met with a student. And in that, I believe there is about safety at home. And I think we have something in there, but that would also probably be the place where we could put in language about that. But if I remember correctly, it might already have that in there because that's what we're giving to send home. And so it's part of the conversation.
That information that we were talking about, specific to secure gun storage and what that is, having that as an attachment to that version.
Yeah, yeah.
So that whatever's maybe posted in certain schools or given out elsewhere is consistent with what's also given home, sent home.
Yeah, absolutely. It's a really good, good insight.
One other thing I have though, this kind of goes back to Laura. I liked in the suicide prevention, there was that line about, as required by HB 1109, student ID badges include. Would that be something that could also be put into the, the health plan? Because that includes eating disorders as well.
Yeah, that's another update.
And, you know, health and suicide, eating disorders and suicide prevention are also on the wellness.
Yeah. And that, that is another change that we should know. I should have put that in here, that one of the changes. So the updates are typically those kinds of things that happen in the meantime, right? So.
Any other questions?
I don't have a question. I'm just going to ask you to indulge my, you know, comment, which is, you know, this is, yeah.
Just say it like a question.
Oh, definitely. Yeah, I could say it like this, but what is? No. I, I have to say that in my over 10 years of being on the school board, this plan is one of the ones that I'm most proud of being associated with at the school district. I remember it when we brought it forward. I just want to say that it's a very excellently written plan. It's a well-thought-out plan. I want to thank everyone that has worked with it. And with the, in conjunction with the other agencies and resources in our community, I think this is one of our very strongest. And as a, as a parent, and my kids are not in the school district any longer, but as a parent, I, it's, it's something you'd never, ever want to think about. But at the time, a few years ago, and you can tell me if this statistic has changed at all, that one out of five high school students consider suicide, which shocked me at that time and still shocks me now and saddens me. But I am, I just want to say that I appreciate the fact that you've worked to update this and the, and the fact that it's so comprehensive and that the teachers are very much, and our counselors are very much aware of it. And, you know, you'll never have anything but support from me on this.
Thank you. Yeah.
Thank you for your indulgence, even though I didn't say it was a question.
Not a problem. Anybody else? Great. Thank you very, very much. We appreciate it.
So I, you always say you leave the best to last, right, John? So, so.
In three minutes.
In three minutes. And John has, John has the thickest plan. So let's go, go for it.
Longest plan, shortest number.
So I'm not, I'm not going to present, so I'm just going to say what I, what I got. So the last plan was, it looked like this and you can see the thickness of this and the new plan looks like this.
It got thicker.
And we went from 166 pages to 100, to 263 pages. I guess I'm three pages short to make it short of 100, but I tried to come close to it.
Double space, thank you.
And why? Why is the plan so much thicker? I think it's the dedication of the work of our, our student services team across the district. We've really organized ourselves in a really good fashion. We have an online manual that did not exist four years ago, that we have consistency amongst evaluation and processes across the district. And I'm pretty, I said that multiple times now, but I'm pretty, I guess, proud of this document because it shows the growth of the team and where we've come from when it comes to putting things in good order with both from a, a parent and student care place, but also compliant with free and appropriate education and least restrictive environment. So it's really put us in a good place for that. So the, the why we have this is because in 2004, Individual with Disabilities Act required this to have, to have this. So it's been in existence since then and it's been updated multiple times. The last time it came to the board was October of 2021. I presented it right after coming, coming on board. And like I said, it's really evolved. This year, we're going through program evaluation and review, which there's a whole section here about how that happens and how we're reviewed. You know, every seven years now it's going to be by the DOE and our processes and procedures. And one of the first things that we're asked to do is submit our, our plan. And I could have submitted this plan, but this plan didn't tell our story. This one did. So we spent a lot of time on it and thanks to the really critical eye of, really, really critical eye of Karen Fisher Anderson, who looked at it. I think when she first gave it back to me and there was so many red marks and sticky, I felt like my term paper just got rejected.
That's a big F.
But the nice part about Karen was Karen doesn't, she'll tell you herself, this wasn't her background in coming into the, into my world of special ed where I live and have breathed these rules and laws. She had a lot of great clarifying questions for language that the layperson really had to understand.
Yeah, which a special ed person wouldn't.
Special ed person wouldn't because I speak in acronyms. And, and one of the first thing Karen says, said, you need a really good glossary. So she went through and really highlighted every acronym I had in there. And on page five of this document is a complete glossary of every term or every acronym you'll find within the, 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 the whole book. And she took out places where I might have repeated the name four times and said, no, say it once, use the acronym in parentheses and then move it on. And we were able to do that throughout the entire document. So that's really a new thing for, for us to be consistent in special ed around what we call things. Because we have a lot of names for things in our, in our world. And this really. And they change constantly. So what's in this book? And so there's first of all laws, laws around child find, how do we first identify children? There's laws around confidentiality, facilities and personnel and how they're certified, parent involvement, public participation in, in our decisions that we make, procedural safeguards, pupil evaluation and then placement of those students. Special, all the things around what happens when I disagree and I'm a parent and what, what procedures do I follow along that way? What are, what are the financial obligations of a district? Where can I find free legal advice if I'm a parent and how to help me? What are my relationships with Head Start and all the local providers? And how do I have to have memorandums of understandings with all of them and all the charter schools around us? Homelessness, what do we do for students that are homelessness? How do they access education? And then we get into a couple of policies around discipline and records retention and records access. And then a very comprehensive PD plan that has to happen over, what, over a three-year cycle. And that's in there in all the things I'm doing now, all the things we did this year and all the things we plan to do in the future. That's in there. Then we get into kind of what, what about our forms and how do we identify a child? And I've said this before, but one of the things that, when I came to Concord and we, we met with the team, we did our, our complete review and our continuous improvement plan, which is also on the website if anyone wants to look at it. One of the things that we identified is that I could be a child over at Abbott Downing and go to a referral team and decide to do an evaluation and identify that child in speech and language disability. Well, there was a completely different process and evaluation process and form process and deliberation process of how we identified at Abbott Downing. And there was a completely different one over at Beaver Meadow and a completely different one over at Krista McAuliffe and a completely different one at the high school. And one of the things we did to really shore it up was took and really worked with our attorneys to have forms that are legal, that are, meet the criteria and that really walked the team through a very consistent process. So when I get a child, if a kid came out of Abbott Downing to the middle school, identified in speech and language disability, we know exactly what that person was identified in. It's consistent.
That's been a long time problem in Concord. It's been building-based management forever. And that, people hold tight to, this is our building and we do it this way. When I first came here in special ed, I remember coming to the central office to talk to Rob Proll, who was the person in charge then, and I got scolded for not going to my building principal. And I'm like, my building principal? You're the special ed director. Like, why wouldn't I go to you? No, he wasn't in charge of special ed in my building. It was bizarre is how I saw it. So I'm glad, I can't believe we're still doing this, but it's the right thing.
And, and so we meet, we meet bi-weekly as a team to make sure we're consistent. And if someone challenges a form, we challenge it with the whole group. And we all look at it as a group and we rip it apart and say, we're going to modify this. But then it goes back into our online manual that all of our, we have a procedural manual that all of our special educators in the district and all of our administrators have access to. So at any time, they can look at that. And that's some of the forms we printed to put into this book. So parents are aware. And this is really, this book is on our website and it's to have parents really aware and transparent about our processes. And that's up there. So I think that's about, that's about what's there and what's new in the manual.
Do you think parents could read and understand this?
I try to do some charts in there. You'll see there's a chart of procedure. There's information on how to talk to the parent information center if they don't underdo it. There's every contact of every special administrator in the district is in the front of that. So if not, to reach out and ask questions. You know, I really do recommend- You know, I really do recommend and I have a very close relationship with the parent information center. And on their website, they, they break things down really well for parents and they, they are a good friendly voice to talk to if they don't want to talk to us here in the school. And, and, and those, those relationships are very important.
That's great. Are there any questions from committee members, comments? Awesome. I mean, I can appreciate, oh, sorry, did you have something?
No.
I appreciate why this is so long, right? Like, we talk about being efficient with our words and our policies and not burying people and information, but in this particular arena, accountability is everything. And so, I can appreciate why it is as robust as it is and I appreciate the level of detail that you guys have put into the work. You know, it's probably not something that I'll have by my bedside in the evening, you know, unless I need to get to sleep.
But if, but if you're asked a question, it's, you can direct someone in the right place to go get it and if not, other, there's other resources within this document that lead them to somewhere else for their question to be answered.
Right, it's great.
And the difficult part of special ed is that the Ts crossed and the Is dotted is as important as how well you can read. You know, like, it's not, it's the success of the child in the program doesn't facilitate continued funding for the program. The paperwork done properly and everything worded properly funds the program, so.
Exactly.
So, special ed teachers really should go to Katie Gibbs Secretarial School, right? And learn all about the paperwork and so they can then do the paperwork correctly. Like, so a manual like this is a lifesaver.
Right. And all our reimbursements are based on doing it accurately.
That's right.
Laura, Laura's a critical role. If Laura gets an order and it's not accurate by the number of services, numbers of hours and she signs off on it, we can't claim that money. So, for both special ed aid or for Medicaid. So, it's really important that we pay attention and do it right because if I click the wrong button and put six minutes versus six hours, I'm losing six hours a day. I can't bill for that child to do that and doing that. So, it's important that we, we have that. And if you're really, and, and, and the money and all those things really matter, but no it really matters is I have a good, solid plan on how to help a student with a disability. And that's what it comes down to. If we're really good at doing this, then we'll be really good at educating that child because the plan's written out very clearly for the teacher and the team that's working with that child.
Yeah.
That's the most important.
And it's data, it's data, right? Like, if you have consistency throughout the schools, then you have common data sets with which to evaluate and, and change programs and evolve, I don't want to say change, but evolve programs as needed. So, I can appreciate that, so.
And to piggyback on that, just, this has been a topic that has been at budget meetings and in the news over the years. And to Kara's point, efficiency, effectiveness and consistency saves this district money. And, you know, our primary focus is on our students. However, we want to make sure we're doing it as economically and efficiently as we can. And I, you know, appreciate your efforts in this to be able to do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else?
My last comment is for all of them, I hope tonight you saw the effort to be consistent across the district from Abbott Downing all the way out to Beaver Meadow. That was really important, certainly with John and his team, the nurses that, that you work with every day, right? And, and making sure, and certainly the work that Dan, as well as Fern does, that was really important. And I think we're beginning to see the fruits of that labor. And yes, the, the child is the most important, don't, don't, don't anybody get that wrong, but we all do have a fiduciary responsibility to our community. And I think they've done that work to make, to at least help that in difficult times, right? So, I appreciate their work very much.
Thank you, Mr. Fabrizio.
Thank you.
So, no motions are required tonight regarding these plans. What I would say is that I'd like to have the minutes not on the consent agenda for the next meeting so that as a committee, we can just briefly update the board on the plans that we reviewed and our assessment of them. Would that be all right with you guys?
I, I agree.
Okay. And with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right.
Just, just a note, the next meeting will be, Karen twisted my arm today and I relented. It will be the Title IX 2020 Plan. You've spent a lot of time with it, but we do have to approve it and bring it back and be part of our policy. So, 415, right? 415.
I'll do it in 30 minutes or less.
Okay, shake on it. I know, I was like, you said.
She said.
When is that, when is that next meeting?
May 12.
Yeah, May 12.
May 12. So, I just, I was just going to say, just to let everybody know that I will not be here and you'll have to-
You, scallywag, okay.
The other issue-
I will be attending, I will be attending a graduation.
Oh, I can't believe it.
Maybe we ask Pam, maybe we'll have Pam sit in. We'll see if that's, because I do, I think it would be helpful to have Pam, just one other person here.
Certainly, and she is-
New eyes, right? Because we've been looking at it and looking at it. And that's, that's fine.
And if we have time, and I suspect we will, if Karen keeps her promise, that we would do crowdfunding, which is an issue that we need to crack away.
Yes, please.
And we've, we've worked on some language to bring to you.
Okay.
We're not quite finished with it, but we will have it ready by the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay?
That sounds great. Without any, what's that?
Who's in favor?
I know, I was like, without any further discussion, all in favor? Hi. Any of those?
Who made the motions?
Barbara Higgins, Liz Boucher, and we are adjourned at 7:08.
Pretty good. Thank you all.
Thank you all.